Recording.
Welcome to a public hearing being conducted in City Council Chambers, 38 Holly Street, Binghamton, New York regarding Local Law 25-01, a local law amending the City of Binghamton Code, Section 265, to add Chapter 4 for good cause eviction. Purpose of this local law is to amend Section 265 of the Code of the City of Binghamton to adopt the provisions of New York's Good Cause Eviction Law. Anyone interested to be heard in reference to this law has this opportunity now at this public hearing. A communication and writing in relation can also be filed with the mayor's office. Prior to the public hearing, there is a copy of the local law for review here at the meeting or also available in the city clerk's office. Anyone wishing to speak may come down at this time.
Hello?
How are you? Um, so Nate Hotchkiss, I wanted to express my support for good cause and urge you to sign it, introduce the bill because I think it's really critical to increasing housing stability here in Binghamton. I, right now, there's no, there's no recourse for tenants that are facing unprecedented rent hikes. And I think it's critical that we get this in place. But there's a few things that I am curious and I wanted to ask you. I, before we even passed the bill, there was, you had asked a number of questions, and I prepared a seven-page document in response with as thorough answers as I could, and I followed up multiple times to see if you had other questions. However, at the same night that we passed, passed this law in City Council, you had a press statement that said that there's still outstanding questions that weren't answered. So what are those? What is, what has been left unanswered?
As I stated, due to public hearings, we can't have some back and forth. At that time, I was reflecting a lot of unanswered questions that I think that, starting, uh, maybe a different mic here, it seemed to be a theme that I heard throughout the presentations is that there were either ways that this would operate, which were under question. I do appreciate you getting back to me with, with some of that, that, those data points, but that was what I'd been hearing from the folks who were speaking sometime at these meetings.
Okay. So, but you yourself didn't have any outstanding questions?
I do have outstanding questions that I think are more holistic, but you know, I don't want to spend a lot of time at this hearing tonight, kind of preaching from the pulpit.
Okay. Um, my, so since, since the passage, there's been multiple scenarios that have been presented to me about people asking whether or not, like what they can do in this situation, people that are facing either like 30 to 80% rent increases. And I, I want to be able to tell them that that's not legal without some justification, but we, we aren't there yet because this hasn't passed into law. So I'm curious what your position is. If there's a senior citizen that's facing an 80% rent increase, they're on a fixed income, do you think that's acceptable? Like, do you think that that should be the course for Binghamton? That should just be how, how things go here?
I can't speak to hypotheticals or-
Well, it's not hypothetical. It's not hypothetical. It's happening today. It's, it's a scenario that's playing out right now for one of your residents on the east side.
Yeah, look, I, I think that my tracker, track record on housing is very, very clear. I fully support a number of different, very active, and I would even call them progressive housing policies as it relates to increasing housing affordability, increasing the supply of housing. And I have said both publicly, and I've, I've said to individual members of council that losing your housing is, is among, if not the top, most impactful thing that can happen to a person in a negative way. If there, if you're saying that there's a senior citizen that's facing housing insecurity because of, of hikes in the rent, obviously, I feel for them and would happy if you provided the information to work side by side to find them supports. But those types of anecdotal, I think, stories are anecdotal stories, and there may be factors at play behind it. I also know that, at the end of the day, we also have situations that arise where properties are bought, there are differences of what people want to do with those properties. That's why I think it's also important that we have an increasing number of properties that have covenants that are set to keep them affordable for a long period of time. Yeah.
So, I, I don't think it's, to me, it's, it's pretty straightforward. I don't think it's acceptable to have an 80% increase that isn't justified. And I think that's what we can appreciate if we were to pass this, that that wouldn't just happen, and that wouldn't just be the commonplace scenario for, for tenants in Binghamton. And it would help with, uh, housing stability, which I, I know that you support. So, um, yeah. I guess, I don't know. The other thing I can't understand is that, why you're kind of moving slow with this process? It was kind of slow to have this public hearing. It seemed like you had your decision made up regarding how you felt about it, like right from the jump that you thought this was a, not appropriate for Binghamton, but you're kind of dragging your feet in taking action on this law. So.
Uh, I'm within the 30-day review period, which is set. I want to take a lot of time to hear from people. I would say that on certain aspects of, of this, as part of the process, I've learned more about it. Some preconceived notions have been reversed, in my opinion, and I've also, I think, been reinforced in some of my thinking. So I want to take a very prescriptive approach. As I've said many times before, this is potentially a regulation that would affect tens of thousands of residents. And whether that's for good or for ill, I think the city should take time in understanding that. I got a couple of questions, Nate, if you're up for them.
Sure.
What is the Binghamton Tenants Union?
It is a group of people that are, a group of tenants that are focused on making sure tenants have the, their rights upheld. They advocate for tenants' rights.
Is it a 501(c)(3)? Is it a-
It's a group of people that get together and meet.
Loose group? Okay. Are you a member of the Binghamton Tenants Union?
Um, I participate with the tenants' union occasionally, depending on my-
Okay.
I don't think I have anything else, but.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well. That was funny, because tenants' unions are not 501(c)(3). They're just a bunch of tenants that live in the community to talk about tenants' rights. Everyone is allowed to form a tenants' union. A lot of people form tenants' union, and I'm sure as the mayor of a city, you know what a tenant's union is, right?
I-
You don't, you, you never heard of a tenants' union as a mayor in a city?
I'm familiar that, of the Binghamton Tenants Union. I, I don't know-
You don't, so you-
What the organization are, is there, is there leadership of it?
Oh, wow. That's, that's, that's mind-blowing to me, because all leadership know what tenant unions are.
I guess, who is the leader of the Binghamton Tenants Union?
The tenants. That's who's the leaders of the Binghamton Tenants Union, is a collective of tenants. There's no leaders. There's-
If I wanted to reach out to the Binghamton Tenants Union, who would I contact?
You can email them, I think at thebinghamtenetentsunion.com or something like that. I don't know. But, um, yeah, it's just a collective of tenants that I know of. But I do have a couple of questions for you. Um, the city council has passed good cause unanimously, so why haven't you signed it yet?
I have a 30-day review period. I'm actually required to hold this before I sign or veto it.
Okay, cool. If you choose not to sign it, what alternative solutions are you proposing to protect renters from unfair evictions and extreme rent hikes?
That's a hypothetical, and also, too, I'm not required to, to respond to questions.
You are, if this is a hearing, is a, is a question and response.
It's, no, it's not.
It's not? So you're just here to listen and not actually have a dialogue with your constituents?
I can participate if I choose to, but I'm not required to.
I'm glad that's on record. Thank you for saying that. Um, have you personally met with tenants who have been displaced due to unfair evictions?
Again, this is, I don't necessarily have to participate in a Q and A.
Well, if not, would you be willing to meet with tenants, like maybe people that's in the tenants' union, to talk about these things?
I've met and talked with tenants over many, many years.
Would you be willing to meet with tenants to talk about the good cause on why tenants want it?
I, they can contact my office, the Binghamton Tenants-
Would you be willing, is a yes or no?
Yes, they can.
Okay, thank you. That's all, that's all I ask. Yes, you would be willing to meet with tenants to talk about good cause. Thank you. The next question I have is, what will it take for you, actually, you don't even answer questions, so I feel like I'm wasting my time. If you sit in here telling me that we're at a public hearing, and you can't answer none of my questions, or you're not required to, I don't understand what's the point of a public hearing if you can't answer questions with people in your, for people in your constituents. Do you acknowledge that without good cause protection landlords can evict tenants without no reasons? And it's putting families at risk for homelessness?
If you'd like to testify to these points and, and, and make the arguments, you're free to, but it seems like-
You don't want to answer them. Thank you. No, you just don't want to answer them, and that's okay. We've been working and talking to tenants for years, and the rent hikes has been ridiculous and a lot, especially for senior citizens, especially for those that are getting social security checks, and they're only allowed at a certain amount at a time. So when a landlord is raising rents $200 more, that does not fit in their budget, and guess what happens? They are forced to move out and find something else, and because the rent hikes in Binghamtons are going up and up, they're not able to find a place that are aligned with the budget that they get from social security. Also, tenants that are using DSS to pay for their rent, DSS only pays for a certain amount for renters. These rents, they cannot afford. So are we just pushing people out of our communities because they can no longer afford the rents that they are in? Senior citizens are a big vulnerable populations, and people with disabilities, and they all, they're all are on a fixed income. So the biggest thing about this bill, the biggest win about this bill, is that landlords could only cap the rent at a certain amount, and that's going to protect the most vulnerable tenants that we have, people with disability, people that are getting social security checks, who have an income that they cannot control. That's the part that, that's really important about this whole bill. So I suggest, and for you to go ask questions, for you to talk to other cities that have passed this bill, mayors that, that are for it, to ask why this bill is important. This is going to help deviate from homelessness. I've seen that you put, there was a grant for $80 million to prevent homelessness, but that's just to secure a spot in a, in a cot, in a space at a church. They don't even have showers for them to utilize. That's not help. Good cause is help. Real shelter system is help.
How are you?
Hi there.
Good to see you, Mayor. Um, so, this council had a similar question. They had a town hall, right? Are you willing to answer that the council had a town hall? The council had a town hall regarding good cause eviction?
Yes.
So, would you be willing to have a town hall, or like, what is this?
This is a public hearing. This is required as part of the passage of, of a local law. I'm required to have this. It's required to seek public input on the local law.
I would say the council's being pretty transparent with residents by having that town hall, don't you think?
I think it was a good idea to have a town hall. Yes.
That's good, yeah. I, I don't understand why you wouldn't have one. But I do want to say, like, how, how many people around the state have you talked to about good cause? How many elected representatives? I hope you would answer this. I really do.
I've actually spoken to many, um-
Can you name them?
I'm not going to get into naming them. If you'd like to provide testimony, please do so.
What would you say as a mayor? Would you say taking money from builders and then getting contracts? How would you, the correlation there, what would you say? What would be your opinion of that?
What's, what was the question?
Getting money from builders in a campaign account and then giving them contracts, what would you say to that?
If you'd like to speak regarding good cause eviction, now is your time to do it.
Do you feel like we have a housing crisis in Binghamton?
Yes.
Okay. What are you doing about it?
I think that if you would like to speak to good cause eviction, the testimony is-
I'm speaking to it. A part of good cause, Mayor, is that we're protecting tenants, and if you veto this bill, you are going directly against your campaign promises that you would protect tenants and help the middle class, right? You just had a big announcement, right? You did. I mean, come on, that's public record, right? People know that. So, what are, what are we going to do to protect tenants? I think this council's done a lot. I think this council's been really transparent. They took, they took, uh, questions from all sides here. They've really heard out the landlords. They've heard out the tenants. They've heard it from all sides. They've done multiple email responses. They've done a town hall. This is all you've done. Why haven't you done more? Why is this all you've done? That's a question. It's not a rhetorical question. And I know you don't have to answer it, but it would, you're a young person, like me, and some, and most of the council. And you've, you've seen a lot of politicians hide in your life. I know that. And I would hope you don't do the same thing, but it looks like that's what you're doing by having this public hearing and not answering questions. What is your, what is your opinion about good cause so far? Where are you leaning? Are you leaning to veto it? And you don't need to do the 30 days. Why don't you make a decision after this? You don't want to answer that? No? Okay. You don't have an opinion on good cause eviction? You have no opinion?
What I'll do is, we'll, we'll give you a standard time, get, get your, your testimony out.
I really wish you would have fulfilled your campaign promises by listening to the residents of this city, which you seem to refuse to do, to hide from the fact of what your actual opinion is. And you're going to need to make a decision on this, and I really hope it's the right one. I really hope it's the right one, because this is a comprehensive housing law that protects tenants, and I would really hope you do the right thing here and fulfill your campaign promises. Otherwise, you're going exactly against what you, what you've preached and what you've stated, as the case, which I haven't seen a lot get better, to be honest with you. And that's really unfortunate. And I want this city to get better, and I believe it will. Do you have any questions for me about good cause eviction? Do you want, do you want to ask anything about it? Do you have any clarifying questions? The council, you know, they had a lot of clarifying questions. They reached out to folks. They had that public hearing. Okay, what do you mean by that? And what I see right now is you're looking at me, your hands on your lip, you're twiddling your ring, and you're being quiet, when in reality, you could just answer these questions and, and be transparent. And I'm not seeing that, but I am seeing it from the council. I see it every day from the council. And every day, I don't see it from you, and that's really disappointing. So thank you.
What was your name, sir?
Sure.
My name is Revo, and I work in the city of Binghamton.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Mark Willen from Binghamton.
Make sure your mic's on there.
Yeah, it's on. Can you hear it?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Um, I've been following this, this, uh, good faith-
What, is that on, Bob? This is mic on? Is it green, Mark?
The mic's working.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Been following this good faith eviction legislation. Um, and I think we all admit that there, there's a problem. There are a lot of problems in Binghamton. Uh, and yes, housing stability is probably, is probably one of them. Um, I think, I think our, uh, our issues are exacerbated by, by the problems down in New York City and the metro New York area. People can no longer afford to, to live down there, so they come up here, and it's sort of created, uh, more demand than there is supply. That naturally tends to increase prices. And we've also seen a number of, uh, sections of the city that have gone over completely to student housing, um, and that has created terrible issues for, for a number of residents. Uh, I guess the question is, does this, this good faith eviction legislation in its current form, does it solve more problems than it creates? Because it will create problems. I have a background in, in economics. I'm also a landlord, small landlord. I have four two-family houses. Um, and, uh, all of my rents are well below HUD's guidelines for, for this metropolitan area. Um, and the reason it is, is because I paid off all my mortgages a while ago. My costs are lower, and, uh, my tenants have benefited from that. Generally, if I have, uh, higher expenses with one of the properties, like I had to put in a new sewer line, uh, a couple of years ago, so I, I raised the rent $50 for each. But I have one tenant's been there 26 years. I've raised the rent twice. What this legislation will create is a situation similar to what's going on down in the New York, New Jersey housing market, where you have to sign a lease. I've never asked my tenants for a lease. Um, I've said, you know, if you find a house, you know, you get married, you want to have, buy a house. God bless you. You can just give me two months' notice and, and, uh, I'll let you go. Uh, but, but the point is, is that, um, it will cause a lot of issues for, uh, for tenants, because landlords will raise the rent every year. They'll be forced to, because you can't, if you leave anything on the table, you don't get to recall that in a future year, should you get a, a significant increase in your costs. Um, now, when a, when a property owner sells it to somebody else, yeah, the costs have gone up. I've, I've seen houses that I may have paid $55,000 for 40 years ago are now going for $155. Uh, so their costs are significantly more. Uh, that's what's causing these, these jumps in, uh, in, in costs for, for the tenants. So, uh, I did speak to a council person, and one of my biggest concerns is, listen, it's not going to hurt me. I'm, I'm transitioning out of it as I get older. Uh, but it will affect the ability of, of younger people who want to invest and maybe use that as a, as a store of value. Um, let's face it, if you hold cash and inflation is 3%, 4%, you know, your, your cash is worth that much less. Um, but, so it will impact their ability to get in. They'll have to get a lawyer now. They'll have to, um, they'll have to, you know, go to court to get more than a certain amount of, of rent increase. And, uh, so I, I spoke to one of the council people, and it suggested something that would, you know, they've, they've taken the state law and they've made it much more restrictive. State law allows landlords to be considered small landlords if they have 10 units or less. Uh, what they did was say, okay, we're going to make it, they, if they have more than one unit, they're, they're no longer small landlords. Okay? Uh, that is wrong, because what it does is, it's going to squeeze out a lot of small landlords, truly small landlords, who take great pride, who live locally, take great pride in their properties, clean it, fix the broken windows, shovel the walks. It's, it's going to push them right out of the market, and, uh, many of the, the, the much bigger, uh, uh, corporations, hedge funds will be snapping up these properties. And, uh, so, it's, it's going to cause a problem. And it, and it doesn't really affect a lot of these, these landlords who rent to students, because the students move out every year. So it resets every year. They can raise it, you know, uh, kids move out, four new kids move in, they raise, raise the rent by $700, $800, who knows? Whatever the market will bear. Um, so, I, I would suggest to you that you veto this and come back with a bill that doesn't force small landlords out of the business, okay? That doesn't create a, 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 a playing field that is tilted in favor of, of the large landlords. And, uh, and, you know, we can continue to work on, on these problems. I've, I've read a great deal on, on the problems that exist, not just here, but the problems down in, in the New York metro area. Those problems, along with the proposed solutions, are moving upstate, and, uh, and it's, uh, it's going to create a lot of, of, uh, instability and, pain for a lot of, of local residents. So I thank you for your time. Uh, I, I wish you well and your deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else looking to speak? Speak in the microphone, please. Is that, is the green light on? Just press that and-
There we go.
Should be good. Say your name again, sir?
Gary Mangan.
Okay.
Um, I'm a small landlord in the area. I take care of also a lot of, uh, other properties for a couple of bigger landlords that are, uh, not in the area. So I have property man, management and maintenance for them. Um, I guess the situation that I'm looking at is, I do understand why you guys want people to be safe where they're at and not be evicted and all this other stuff, but I run across, because I take care of about 70 units for other people, I run across a lot of problems with people that are on drugs. They start turning the apartment into a drug den, and as long as they're paying, there's nothing we can do about it, most of the time. Um, we have one option, which is a holdover, to try to get the apartment back, and/or if that doesn't work, because a lot of times that's hard to get to go through, we end up having to increase the rent a dramatic amount so that they can't keep up with it. And they try. They, they bring other people in, they, they open up cable bills, they do this, they do that. So it's almost impossible to get rid of these people. So one of the ways that we have found is to do that. I know it's not a decent way to do it. I know it's, uh, not, you know, morally right to, to double somebody's rent so that they can't keep up with it, so that you can, can have a reason to try to get rid of them, but we don't really have much choice. Um, I see that if this, if this passes through, it's going to be very tough. It's going to make it even tougher for us to do anything. Um, and I don't see how we're supposed to get rid of problems like that. Uh, I understand, you know, senior citizens, vets, all that. Uh, they need places to be, safe places, affordable places. I think our tax shouldn't be on the landlords as much as it should be. We should go and talk to DSS, see if they could, instead of paying $1,900 to put somebody in a hotel room, maybe pay $800 to put them in a, in an apartment, instead of the 401 that they allot, because that doesn't help nothing. 401 ain't going to get you anything anywhere. Um, I think the- I think the, the attack should go towards, you know, because Catholic charities and all them, they'll pay a little bit more. There's, there's different ways that people can try to figure out how to keep up with the, with the rents going up. I can understand. And yeah, maybe we shouldn't be jacking them as much as we are, but, you know, just this last year, NICE went up 10%. My water bills went up 10%. My interest rates went up. Everything around me went up. And at 10% on what I owe, $50 added to the rent because my rents are so low, that does nothing. You know what I mean? Like, right now, the average for a three-bedroom is around about $1,400. I only charge $900 for my three bedrooms. So I'm well below the, the budgeted, whatever you guys want to call it in the area. I can't raise it enough to keep up if it's locked to a certain amount. If something does happen, like this gentleman had said, you know, anything, you know, I just had to replace 27 feet of sewer line. I had to cut the whole back of my building out. I've put over a quarter million dollars into three of my buildings in the last five years. And I've got tenants that I can't get rid of that are just destroying it behind me. I've had to actually try to press charges. I can't because when it's their apartment, it's their property. I can't do anything. It's a civil suit after. They've probably built up about $10,000 worth. I can only go for five. You know what I mean? It's little things like that that are on the landlord's side that, that's, that's rough. So I understand where your position is. I would probably do the same thing and veto it. I don't see it being proper. It's got to be adjusted a different way. So that everybody makes out, not just the tenant. Us landlords already have a hard time trying to keep up, trying to do what we got to do. We get code sightings. People don't want to pay the rent and then they call code on you and then they don't have to pay the rent for a certain amount of time while you're still trying to get the money to repair, do what you have to, to get it back up to that, you know, position to where they'll allow them to pay rent again or they'll want to pay rent again. It, it's tough. It's really tough. I'm also not one of those guys that gouge people. So I'm not, I'm not looking at it as in I want to be able to just freely raise my rents whenever I want. I just don't think that it's fair on both sides, I guess. It needs to be looked at a little bit different. And I do believe that, that help in the area should be focused more on maybe trying to get people into apartments as opposed to just throwing them in hotels and paying two, three times the amount. I guess, I don't really have much else that, the, the rest of it, I, I understand not putting people out. But I guess I'm just trying to stick up for the, the little guys because I am one of them right now. So that's all I got, I guess. I don't really have too many questions. I just wanted to express some of where I'm at as a small guy trying to make it. COVID crushed me. I, I almost lost everything during that because of the no pays, the damages, everything that went on. And then they all just took off. So I couldn't even get the L R, the L R I P and all that funding that they did. I wasn't qualified for none of that. So that all came out of pocket. So it hurt a lot. I, I, I made it through it. I'm still trying to make it through it. I think this is going to make it to where I don't know if I could even keep my buildings at. So it is going to push a lot of the little guys out, I do believe. And then everything's going to turn back over to the city. Then they're going to really see hikes in rents. And all the revitalization they did on both sides of the river and all the entrance ways to Binghamton are going to go right back down. All that money that was invested is just going to get wasted. So I don't know. I, I don't want to be you to have to make this decision. I definitely don't, but I think veto is in where it should be and maybe look at it, set some different guidelines on it. And then propose it a different way. I guess that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Yeah, we could, yeah.
Thank you for the courtesy. Allow me to address this young lady down front. As far as accessibility advocated for 30 years and responsible for this being paid for through CEDAC funds. So please be informed regarding the public hearing that we're here this evening. Mayor Cram, thank you very much for the opportunity. Was in discussion with the city clerk today to understand if we were indeed under good cause eviction at this point in time. What I really wish at the town hall meeting, you had this probably filled with 80 to 100 individuals, the majority of which were small landlords, 10 properties or under, who were speaking to you and council members regarding difficulties they've had for non-payment and such. We had a wide range of even corporate landlords that were here. A gentleman that spoke after me was a hedge fund, what I would call a scalp hunter. For those that were passing, especially in Center City, as you know how that's transformed. You've been boots on the ground for us for many years and know what our trials and tribulations have been. I'm not seeing this as being a way to help tenants. And I would really like to understand with our council members, how many were actually renters versus homeowners? When you actually have skin in the game, and I've told this story before, at age 25, after doing a vegetable stand, I purchased my three family in Center City, wonderfully proud when everything around me was drugs and prostitution. Clawed it back, one house, one block. One of your most successful neighborhood watch in the city brought a million dollar grant from the Department of Justice, which covered your policing activities but seeding activities. We also did lectures and presentations on tenants' rights but and responsibilities, landlords' rights and responsibilities. Recently, there was one, we have had those paid for through CEDAC funds, was held over at the Holiday Inn Arena. One of their ballrooms, absolutely packed to the gills. There was a recent one because people are hungry for that knowledge to understand what the new provisions are. 2019, what are downstate laws and protections came upstate has changed the fabric and the landscape. We did not, at this point in time, need to do what Albany allowed us to opt into. Hearing arguments from city council members at their meeting, from the housing justice activists that they've been working with, council member who's been very active, one that's proposed it. Your hearing was one ear. We have two ears. You are needing to gather all. And it just seems when you come out of an agreement, both parties should not be happy if you have a good one. This is very lopsided. As a person who had to go through an eviction, unbelievable time, effort, hundreds of dollars, thousands of dollars in damage. I was not alone from the people that were speaking at the town hall, was one of the ones to request, how about we have one down at the senior citizen center over on the first ward to get other input? Your hands are tied. This isn't a meeting that you're required to do, but you're not able to veto this, unfortunately. And because council did a holdover, the maneuver, it's not a 60-day roll-in. It's immediate when it comes down from the state. My notes are in the car. But I think we can do better and better for the people. Because I've watched those videos where they're being housed in hotel rooms. Or I see back and forth to the hospital several times a week where people had shanty houses. We have done better. You've proven it. You're doing housing. You have done housing. I do not believe that this endeavor to assist tenants is going to do what you think it does. And if you think as a property owner who has skin in the game, if it was to sell or to buy, that's happening next door to me at Two Family, that that person either coming or going out of that real estate transaction cannot evict because they're changing, where are the property rights? And what I would encourage possibly is these homes that are boarded up, pool the money, get grants, they're out there. And these groups put the people and the tenants in to get families' house. I can't wait for the project on Lyle Avenue. Congrats on helping to spearhead that, the intergenerational YWCA project and also utilizing the urbanly property. Cannot wait for that. Cannot wait for St. Mary's Rec Center to be our new youth center. I know I'm probably over time. Thoughts a bit scattered, but thank you for your time and this opportunity to speak and wish your back wasn't against the wall on this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone? Okay, seeing none at this time, I will close this public hearing. Thank you so much to anywhere, everyone who participated.